All right, we'll call to order this December tenth meeting of the Nelson County Board of Supervisors. If you all will please rise and join us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Mr. Rutherford.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, welcome. We will start with the public comments, and we have Ann Michie signed up if you would join us.
Good afternoon, Ann Michie, eighteen fifty-six Monique Drive, Ellis Ford, Virginia. And I'm here on behalf of Rockfish Presbyterian Church and here to stay in Wintergreen. The Members of Here to Stay in Wintergreen Board of Directors. Would like to share information with you about the Nelson Enrichment Club, NEC, a new program that began early September. This program is a partnership of Here to Stay in Wintergreen, the Blue Ridge Medical Center, and Rockfish Presbyterian Church located on Highway one fifty-one just north of Ellis Ford. It is open to all Nelson County residents who are experiencing mild to moderate memory loss and/or Parkinson's disease. On Mondays and Wednesdays from ten a.m. to two p.m., volunteers and members engage in a number of activities intended to reduce social isolation and support mental and physical health while providing respite for committed caregivers. The program is based on a national model called Respite for All. While the national program is a faith-based program, the NEC program offers a secular social approach to care for this population. It is the only one of its kind in Virginia. The comments from some of our participants include, "He had a good time and is ready to go back tomorrow." "Thank you who all made the day possible." That was from a caregiver. "We're so grateful for this program, your efforts and the great volunteers." Also from a caregiver. "I thought everybody enjoyed making the picture boards yesterday. It was a lot of fun talking about the pictures and there was a lot of camaraderie." That was from a volunteer. The program can accept up to fifteen participants per day and might expand to three days per week if needed. Scholarships are available to support those unable to pay the daily cost of forty dollars. Additional information can be found at www.nelsonrespite.org. Please help us spread the word about this important new resource for county residents and their families who are challenged by such healthcare issues as dementia and Parkinson's. Thank you for hearing me out, and I've got a couple extra copies of this for anybody in the audience who might be interested.
If you could, you could leave those on the...
I think we've already passed this out to the county.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right. That's all who were signed up for public comments. Did anybody miss the signup sheet that wanted to speak in public comments? You come on up. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Yes, I'm Gwen Seed, one four three nine eight James River Road. I'm just here to share a little bit of my experience. We live right behind the Front Street Garage. And on November, I think it was eighteenth, on a Monday in the evening, VDOT installed rumble strips. And we woke up probably four in the morning hearing them. And so, talked to Jesse, he reached out to VDOT and neighbors, and we started a petition that still exists. But what I want to say here today is that for about two weeks, we spent a lot of time trying to get support and trying to get VDOT's ear. And they didn't respond to Jesse, they didn't respond to my neighbor. And what I'm asking for is your support as our board to open lines of communication with VDOT. Because that experience, we didn't sleep for two weeks because that sound is so low. It cuts through headphones, sound barriers, sound machines, fans. And our neighbor couldn't sleep, and we spoke to multiple neighbors who are affected. And ultimately, we feel like it does not solve the safety issue. Everybody I spoke to said, "We need the speed limit lowered before town." And I know Jesse said they've tried and tried with VDOT on that issue. So, what I'm just imploring and asking for is more community engagement or communication with us. Because that was a really destructive and difficult experience and hard to get support and hard to get the ear of folks who are making those decisions. They did come take them out, and that was exciting. The next day, they came and put modified ones down. So, we can sleep now, which is great. But we still hear them all through town and in our yard. And I don't see them slowing traffic down at all. So, that's what I wanted to express. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? If not, we will close the public comment section. And before we move on to the consent...
There's one person.
Oh, sorry, come on up, my bad, I didn't see you.
I was just gonna...
Come on up, state your name and for the record.
I'm Gwen Seed, one four three nine eight James River Road. I was just gonna kind of follow up on what my wife was saying that, you know, currently the way the rumble strips are installed out there, they're the first ones, the northernmost ones, are installed before any speed limit reduction has been asked for. So, you have trucks going sixty-five miles an hour slamming into rumble strips. And it seems like the best way to slow cars down is with speed limits. I know that some people are concerned about jack braking trucks and that that's a noise concern. So, I'm not a VDOT engineer, but it seems like putting a speed limit reduction at the top of the hill so that trucks going southbound can slow before they start coming down the hill and don't get slingshotted around the curve coming into town. Seems like that would reduce jack braking and help with the safety issue.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on, before we get to the consent agenda, Candy, do we have, do we want to introduce anybody? I believe you have some...
Yes, Grace, we're here to introduce our new employees.
I just didn't see that anywhere on here, so I figured we'd do that now, right? Is that good?
Thank you so much.
Yep, turn it over to you, Grace.
Good afternoon, I have a few new employees I'd like to introduce. First, we have Robi Asher. He was hired as a maintenance worker in November. We're excited to have him join the county staff. He is a Nelson County native from Gladstone. He comes to us from Coleman Adams Construction where he worked as a carpenter for over four years. Before he worked there, he worked as a gas fitter for Foster Fuels and also as a surveyor and carpenter for Acres of Virginia Survey. Robi has extensive experience with welding, framing, roofing, operating heavy equipment, and auto mechanics. And he has hit the ground running with his team here already. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Robi Asher to our maintenance department. And next, we have Ms. Libby Ashby. We're pleased to introduce her to county staff as administrative assistant and permit technician. She comes to us from Appomattox County where she served as their director and victim witness. Before that, she worked for Nelson County Public Safety for over four years as a nine-one-one dispatcher, senior dispatcher, and TAC, which is Terminal Agency Coordinator. Ms. Ashby excels at records management, improving standard operating procedures, and keeping a strong attention to detail. And she'll be a wonderful asset to our building inspections and planning and zoning departments. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Libby Ashby back to Nelson County as administrative assistant and permit technician. And we also have Dustin Spitler. He was hired as a building inspector recently as well. He is also a Nelson County native. Upon graduation, he worked for Michael &amp; Sons Services for six years doing residential electrical work and electrical sales. After that, he worked for Braden Property Management, Acme Stoven Fireplace, and Fortune Electric. He has extensive experience in electrical maintenance, plumbing, providing customer service, and blueprint reading. He also has obtained two years of electrical training from K-Tech. Additionally, he has an OSHA-ten certification. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Dustin Spitler to our building inspections department.
Good, thank you, and welcome, all of you. We're glad to have you. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, consent agenda is approved. All right, sir.
Are we gonna address the safety people now or...
No. Next, we're moving on to presentations. We have VDOT report.
Well, good afternoon, board. I don't have a whole lot to report. I heard the comments about the rumble strips and I'll give a little explanation to why they are the way they are. Those rumble strips were initially installed incorrectly, out of spec, when the painting contractor put them back in. Since then, they have been re-put back, taken out and put back in. I wrote over them today, and I tried to get engineers to run over them. Yes, they are louder. But we have to remember that, you know, those old rumble strips that were out there, they've been out there quite a while, and they have gotten worn down. They pretty much lost much of their effectiveness in learning and doing what you want to do as far as alerting traffic of the traffic cell. So, I ask that, you know, that we see how they work. Not that they can't be removed and something less put in, that's certainly possible. But they are part of the safety improvements that we want on Route twenty-nine. As you all know, we had a tremendous meeting with the public about safety on Route twenty-nine corridor. And these are a safety feature. Yes, they are, they can be offensive. But I don't know that they're to that point. I certainly respect what the two public comments were. I don't, to them, I'm sure it's just, it's terrible. But we will look at them if need be. But right now, we want to see how they perform. So, with that, I don't know how else to address that. But I'm pretty much upfront with you on the situation. They do, they ought to bring attention to the traffic cell to be aware and stop if needed. Other than that, just don't have a whole lot to report on. We did finish our full lane mowing on primary. We are, there will be another litter pickup in Nelson County as soon as the contractor gets here. So, that's coming. We do have one item of interest up on one fifty-one. We have a field slope that we're gonna do a major, we're gonna do some major repairs on up near Assland Way Lane. During the flood, during the heavy rains, it slid. And we've got to do a repair out there. So, more to come on that. We haven't figured out exactly what we're gonna do. We're probably gonna do an engineered, do some soul laden, that's what we call it, some engineered slope repairs. But that will be happening probably sometime this winter. With that being said, I won't entertain any questions that you have on your hands.
Questions?
So, I'm just curious if, I'm sure there's a logical reason for the placement of the rumble strips and the speed limit adjustment, you know, the forty-five zone. The comments that were made earlier, just questioning whether it should be before or after. Is there a reason for where VDOT places those or...
Yes, I mean, I don't know the specification or the standard for the location, but I would think that there's certainly placement limitations of where you want them at. Certainly, we would want them inside that forty-five. We have a set, we have one set as soon as you get into the forty-five, then one set down midway. And we all know how traffic drives through that intersection. Just because it says it's forty-five miles per hour doesn't mean that people aren't running sixty right until they get to the seven itself. But to answer your question, I don't know the exact spacing, but I could find out if...
I was just curious, yeah.
You know, since we're on the topic of rumble strips, you know, I think the safety of that intersection is obviously a critical piece of something that we've interacted as a board. We all know someone who has unfortunately died in that intersection. And I can name multiple individuals in my life who had died in that intersection. We've visited the forty-five conversation, what the expansion looks like. And if I remember correctly, you did get back to us and say that was still not a feasible solution. Is that correct?
Not on the north end.
Okay.
Not on the north end. We are still looking at...
The south side.
Excuse me, doing a speed, an interim speed limit between the forty-five and the sixty on the south side of Livingston.
Okay, so that is still in the works.
That's still in the works.
Okay, well, keep a surprise of that and whatever we need to do on the advocacy of our board. I think, you know, one thing that I was going to be mentioned today in directives is, you know, seeing if we could get some more traffic enforcement from, whether that's the sheriff's department or state police, maybe just sitting out there every so often and see, because at the end of the day, people aren't going just sixty, they're going like seventy. You know, a lot of those folks coming down there, they're speeding heavily. So, figuring out less obtrusive options to the community of Livingston to where we can figure out making that intersection safe, you know, our board is still open to. Do you know if there's any smart scale projects in the future that may be related to this intersection, maybe coming up?
No.
No?
No, I don't know of any.
Wow.
There are none that I know of, and I don't know that there's any study that we would have done to justify or to quantify, you know, have a smart scale solution.
Yeah, gotcha.
You know, like I said, and one thing, the old rumble strips, they were down. I mean, the traffic wears them down, and they were much, they were not aggressive enough. These are more aggressive, and I don't know, I don't doubt anything these folks said that they don't wake them up. I mean, I don't know if it would have been, and maybe this is something in the future to measure the noise level, see what the difference is. I don't know what the, I think the ones that are out there now are much quieter than the ones that were initially installed. They should be because the spacing changed on them. They were closer together. And the originals, the spacing was falling apart, and they made more noise.
Yeah.
So...
Inba, you got anything else?
I had some more things.
Keep going, you're on.
So, we currently have another project related off of the Rockfish River in Skyler where we are trying to attain, I believe it was some VDOT permissions. It was for the put-in with the Parks and Rec Department. Are you familiar with what we're talking about, Candy? Remember the grant we got? We had some correspondence about it earlier this year. Jerry had indicated that he was running into some VDOT pieces that he needed to clear. Wanted to just, I was gonna put that in directions, but while you're here, I'll just mention it. If we could get some correspondence with the Parks and Rec and see what we can do about that. That would be awesome.
No, I don't know, I don't, I'm not, I don't know what that is, you know.
Yeah.
Jerry can serve me. What I would ask is just ask Jerry to let us hook up, Jerry and I get in touch and talk about it and find out what the problem is.
Yes, and we'd like to get that finalized because we've been waiting for it put in there for a little while.
But is that part of the canoe launch and, or is it something else?
I believe it is, yes, yes.
Does he have a canoe launch down Rockfish River Road when you take out and put in at the wayside, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep. And other than that, I'll correspond with you first part of the year so we can talk some more about the sidewalks and whatnot, what our status is and all that. So, the side, related to the VTAP money?
Yes.
Yes, so I'll correspond with you hopefully the first part of the year. Where it's fresh on our minds.
You done?
I'm done.
Anybody? I have nothing.
You do?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
And if you could take a minute, maybe meet the neighbors over there, that'd be great.
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we're moving on to social services, office building, design development. Want to just bring up PMA? Yep, y'all, come on up.
For a moment. Okay, yep, I'll just introduce, we've got Jeff Stodgel and Ash Call, Ash Shaw, excuse me, of PMA here to present the latest design drawings for the board's review and possible approval.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. We're here this afternoon to present the work of the last six to eight weeks in taking what we showed you last time as a schematic design. And we have developed that. Now, it's much more detailed. We've gone through the site plan development with a civil engineer. So, we have a, we have a more or less a finished site plan. We know how to handle drainage. We understand all of the details. That's ready to be submitted for the site plan review process. And we want to submit that as early as, you know, as early as possible, you know, this week, next week, to keep us on the schedule we need to be on. The exterior design and interior design has been worked through a process. We're now, we have a final plan. We're on our square footage target. The exterior has more detail worked into it. And what you're seeing and we'll see in the presentation is a professional renderer's simulation, I think is a very close simulation of what we have in mind. We've worked the color schemes through the committee. Some of the details on the interior or I'd say the components of the building, we now know what the mechanical system will be. We have a good idea of what the electrical and plumbing systems will be. And we have taken this design and put it in the hands of a third-party cost estimator. And yesterday, we got confirmation that the building and the site costs are within the budget that we've given you. We're really proud of that. And I think it paves the way now to move ahead with confidence that when we get into the bidding in the early spring, that we're gonna be on the best posture we can really possibly be on. The only caveat I put out there is we don't know what is gonna happen with what has been rumored to be tariffs. And that's just one of those things that we're just gonna have to see where we are in the springtime. But I think it's very important that we move ahead in this climate and get this into bidding as fast as possible. So, we'll present, I'm Chuck Rocksher, we'll present that where we are with the design. If you have any, answer any questions. What we're asking you to do today is release us to move ahead with the construction drawings and submit the site plan for review. Site plan review takes, it can take almost as much time as it takes us to finish up the construction drawings. So, I want to get that training moving. And I also want to get released to go ahead and get our bid documents together. So, Rocksher, can you lead us through the design?
So, here we can see the entrance view of the building and our front elevation. So, we've got our front canopy and walkway connecting to the parking area. You know, we're using materials that are sensitive to the budget but also long-term solutions like metal roofs. We're using McFortin-Batten siding that is a hardened product. And then we're also including panels of bronze metal, panels around window openings as well to give some relief to the facade. This is a view up from Route twenty-nine as you're driving by. We wanted to create a building that was highly visible from Highway twenty-nine so that way weight finding wasn't an issue for clients of the building and for the county overall. And again, emphasizing kind of forms and shapes of the building. And then here on the back, this would be off of Tambar Plaza as you approach and turn into the site. We have included some use of red brick and painted brick to help unify the back elevation and get the building to read as one and very cohesive. This is our site plan, so you can see down at the bottom of the page is Tambar Plaza. Up at the north is Highway twenty-nine. Residents and clients of Nelson County would turn down Main Street and then down into Tambar Plaza, and they'd have two ways in and out of the parking lot to be able to gain access to the building. This is our floor plan, so we've got, around the perimeter of the building, we've placed all of the offices so that way staff members can have natural daylighting. And then we've got, in the center of the building, we've got the lobby with two interview rooms for employees to meet clientele. To the right of the plan, we've got our conference and training center and break room along with a staff entrance. And then there's also another employee entrance to the left of the building as well. And this is our furniture plan that we've worked with the committee on to, we're looking at furniture layouts and layouts of the break room and training room. And then this is our exterior elevations of the front of the building and the back of the building that face our two main streets. Again, just looking at our materiality, those metal panel systems, the board battens siding, the metal roof, where we're incorporating painted brick and red brick. And then also using treated wood, blue lamb timbers on the front canopy to give a sense of warranty welcome to the building and let people feel like they're being invited in. So, our next steps moving forward would be technically our working drawings by the end of February. So, we come back to the board to do a final presentation of working drawings to proceed to the next stage of bidding. We're anticipating that bidding would be about six weeks and then about an eighteen-month construction timeline before it's ready to handover.
Good, thank you. Anyone have questions on presentation?
Yes, so if we could go on over to the, go to the floor plan diagram. Check if it works to the end of the site plan. So, as it relates to just the general framing of this, is this gonna be framed in yellow pine? Or is it gonna be CMUs? Is it gonna be metal framing? What is the expectation with commercial?
It's a slab-on-grade...
Slab-on-grade.
...with what's called cold form or light gauge metal framing for the walls and light gauge metal trusses for the roof structure.
Okay, so it'll be largely an engineered framing metals. As it relates to the cape aspects, so let's go to the elevation, one elevation either side. So, what is the up, the top portion there gonna be utilized? Is it like, obviously, you can kind of see a breeze way with an open to the above, and I think that looks really pretty. What about on both sides of the building where you kind of have a little bit, your, I assume it's a nine-twelve or twelve-twelve pitch? Or is it gonna be attic usable, or is it just gonna be for mechanicals?
It's gonna be space left for structure trusses and mechanical line fixtures.
Okay, so most of that's gonna be your mechanicals up top, okay.
These, this kind of a building generally has to get a fairly high bearing level to get all of our fire sprinklers and...
Yeah, so there's a lot of stuff that goes up top.
Exactly.
Okay. And I'm assuming that we're looking at doing all electric heating systems and... And I'm, I'm assuming that we're looking at doing all electric heating systems and water. Are we gonna be doing some difference related to like a petroleum-based product for your, some of the mechanical systems?
We'll have one centralized, um, mechanical unit on the roof and it's, it's nestled in a U-shaped sort of well up there.
Okay.
That's gonna be, uh, a heat pump system and then it will, it will rely on a, what's called a VAV box reheat system. So actually it's an air conditioning system and then a reheat which is electrical.
Sure, okay. It's all electrical. And I guess for hot water, you're just doing a standard boiler system, probably gas-based or electric as well?
We'll have a, we'll have a hot water heater in there. Kind of have a user on that specifically, but we can look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing that I wanted to mention on the, if you go to your site plan, really towards where you can see parking, um, obviously this relates to the village, parking is not necessarily a concern, but if, wherever we can put parking, I'm gonna advocate for it. And I think, and I don't know if there's specific, is there a rationale as to why the parking, there's no parking on the eastern side of the building or is that just more, is it a cosmetic thing to put landscaping or was it a practical reasoning?
We try to get the most parking on the site that we could.
Yeah.
And we also.
See, I guess you can't really get any parking right there with those five trees.
Yeah, on the right side, that's where that CSV building is right next door.
Yeah.
So there's no space.
Oh, okay, so you can't, can't live there, okay.
Wait, are you saying?
I'm talking about the front.
He's talking about across, along Tambar.
Okay.
You have my brain.
Instead of these five trees here.
Yeah, is there any reason?
Can we put parking there?
Because most likely if we're gonna have like a Christmas parade, a festival of some sorts.
There's a lot across the road available that could be.
Yeah.
Turned into parking.
Yeah, there is.
We, we can go back and ask the civil engineer, but let me go up to the screen.
Yeah.
This area in here.
Yes.
Is really part of our stormwater management system.
Oh, okay.
So this, this kinda candy cane line right there is a drainage line.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a catch basin, a swale.
It's gonna be catching the water from both sides.
I don't think we can get into that space easily with parallel parking or anything.
Okay.
It, it's actually pretty tight.
Yeah, I can't really conceptualize the depth.
Arrangement in here and what we, we looked at parking along here and we looked at, you know, parking over here. Ultimately, we, we kind of came up with this to minimize the, you go back, I guess it just picked up on it, whatever. Came up with this approach to minimize any kind of frictional, you know, kind of backing out at the entrance line.
Sure.
And, um, settled that this is, is the maximum that we can get. This is enough for the social services department plus this year parking. I would say that across, across Tambar, you know, in the future, you can create more, you know, you, you can create parking resources there.
Okay.
Informally or, you know, I think greater quantity is included now.
Gotcha, okay. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Um, I will say anybody who has gone through the building process, you know the number of details and how many variations the committee has gone through on which that I serve, on our committee, and the, the different variations of colors and the amount of time we spend outside staring at, at trim pieces and paint colors and, um, I'm extremely pleased with the, the, the final product and, um, the, the, I know social services is pleased with what, with what we have. So, um, everything down to the size of the desk and the chairs and all the furniture going in is all, has all been meticulously factored into the, the design and the square footage of the building. So, um, I think what we're looking for today is, um, do we need a vote? Do we need consensus? What do we need?
Yes, you have a resolution to consider for authorizing.
Yeah, did you have a question?
No, I was just about to ask, how does she want that motion to stand?
Gotcha.
Do you just wanna?
Yes, so we do have resolution R twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution R twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one. Nelson County Board's advisory authorization proceed with construction drawings for the social services office building.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Amanda?
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Dr. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Farm?
Yes. Thank you all very much and thank you PMA for all of your hard work so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to getting this under construction. Yes, sir. Thank you all.
What height interior is it? Is it gonna be like ten foot, twelve foot?
Ceiling heights vary, but I think.
On average, it'll be about nine or ten.
Nine, nine and a half, I guess.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
And just had, um, something along the lines on this topic. We'll be working with Davenport here shortly to come up with, um, our financing plan and we'll get you all a calendar that kinda integrates, uh, the financing aspect of the project along with the construction. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that was forthcoming.
Very good. Thank you. And speaking of Davenport, would you like to introduce Candy or?
Sure. We have Mr. Ben Wilson here of Davenport. I believe, uh, Mr. Kooch is under the weather so he isn't able to join us today.
Thank you, sir.
Um, and what we're gonna do today is have Ben just briefly review some of the financial policy guidelines that the board, um, looked at with Davenport at their retreat in September. So Ben's gonna do a quick overview of those and then, um, gauge the board's interest in, uh, moving forward with those policies. Ben?
Thank you. Good afternoon, thank you for having me. Like Candy mentioned, Roland is under the weather today so he wasn't able to participate. But we just wanted to give a sort of, like Candy said, a brief overview of these policies. This document is pretty much the same as what we looked at in September. As far as the presentation portion of this goes, there's a decent number of pages, but I'm gonna run through them relatively quickly. We've been working with staff and we had that meeting with you all in September to look at financial policies. They're generally considered a best practice of local governments. And as you go into borrowing for the DHS building and the other, um, DSS building and the other projects that you have coming up, it would be good to have these policies in place to, um, help guide you in decisions there. As a part of this process, we did put together a collection of peer comparatives, um, just to provide some perspective. We did have two groups that we looked at. We looked at budget peers, um, which from the, uh, the Auditor of Public Accounts comparative report, uh, your budget in comparison to others and generally we looked at places with a budget between fifty and eighty million. You're right about the midpoint of that. Uh, we also looked at your contiguous peers, that'd be the counties that surround you. So Almar, Augusta, Rockbridge, Buckingham, Amherst and Appomattox. So you'll see those throughout this presentation. Like I mentioned, the policy document that we looked at before is relatively similar to what we saw before. I'd say relatively similar, it's basically the same document with very minor changes. There are nine sections that we've included in that document, the purpose, fund balance, revenues, expenditures, budgets, capital improvement program, debt, financial reporting and economic development. The first section is sort of big picture, why you have the policy, what the purposes of it are. Generally, we're promoting financial stability and health, uh, looking at the big picture rather than focusing on one decision in, uh, on its own. So that's really the, the first section and you can see in the back of the document what that gets into detail on. Section two is fund balance. As you're all aware, the county's audit categorizes fund balance in several different ways. From most restrictive to least restrictive, it goes from non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned and unassigned. For the purposes of the policy, we focus on that unassigned fund balance because that's sort of what we would consider your savings, what you have, uh, put in the bank for a rainy day and to help you make daily payroll and everything like that. Now, in looking at your unassigned fund balance over the last several years, uh, you can see that you've ranged from about sixty-five percent to seventy-four percent of your general fund revenues. With some figures that we got this past week for unaudited twenty twenty-four, uh, that fund balance went up slightly from twenty-nine million to thirty million. With that twenty-four unaudited figure, we also have those unaudited revenues of forty-eight million, which puts you at about sixty-two point six percent. In twenty twenty-five, you all did include use of fund balance in your budget, so we've assumed that here for twenty twenty-five. We haven't made any assumptions for revenues coming in higher than budget or expenditures being below. This is purely the fund balance that was budgeted in your, uh, physically your twenty-five budget. So you can see that goes down a little bit because you budgeted to use fund balance. Still at about fifty-seven point seven percent though. Our recommendation for this policy was to maintain a minimum level of thirty percent. Again, that's the bare minimum, so anything over and above that is, is a good thing to have, um, especially for unforeseen circumstances and other emergencies. We would also recommend a budget stabilization fund at five percent, which can be used in the budget process, again, for unforeseen circumstances. But it, it's just another, uh, reserve that you have in case you need it. That, that we would recommend leaving at, putting at five percent. So in total, it would be a minimum of thirty-five percent of your general fund revenues. You can see on the right side of the page what that means in terms of dollars in the FY twenty-five budget. That thirty percent would be about thirteen point eight million dollars. The budget stabilization fund of five percent would be two point three million and there, there are additional funds of about ten million over and above those two minimum values. Now, that ten million, take with a grain of salt because you may have, it may be encumbered or other things. This is purely unassigned fund balance per the audit. So we would need to do a closer look if there was a desire to use any of that ten million. But again, we wouldn't recommend you spending it down to exactly the, the percentage that will be in your policy because presumably next year with inflation and everything, your budget will likely rise, um, which means those percentages will mean larger dollar amounts and if you spend that full ten million, you would then be out of compliance. So we wanna avoid that if we can. But really these target levels, we just wanna make sure you have enough cash in your, uh, in your account to be able to run your operations without having to borrow for that. And also be able to provide for unplanned, unforeseen circumstances like I've mentioned a few times. As far as, uh, comparison to your peers, uh, you can see Nelson at the top there. You all are in good shape in compared to your peers. The left side is in dollars, uh, the right side is a percentage of general fund revenues. Uh, you can see that thirty-five percent that we've proposed for this policy is right at about the median of your contiguous peers and it's actually just below your Virginia budget peers. So keeping you above that thirty-five percent should keep you in a good position in comparison to your peers. And it's also important to realize that with these comparatives, we are just looking at their audit. Different places account for things a little bit differently. So some places it might look like they have a lot more money than they actually do because those funds might be used for something else that we're just not aware of. Section three covers revenues. Uh, this isn't a long section, but, uh, the big picture here is that we wanna make sure that the revenues that you're collecting, the one-time revenues that you're collecting are not used for ongoing operations. And the, you have enough recurring revenues to cover your operations. So this just encourages you to take a look at your revenues as you're going through the budget process to make sure that, um, you're maximizing those in the ways that you can. Section four looks at expenditures. Very similar concept here. We don't wanna use one-time revenues to cover recurring expenditures. We wanna make sure that ongoing expenditures are met with recurring revenues. So that's the, really the big point here. There are some other topics that are covered in this section though. Section five looks at budgets. It sort of lays out the budget process that you all have. Again, there's not gonna be really any wholesale changes to what you do, but it really memorializes your process, um, so that it's down in writing so that someday when you all are not on the board, it's still something that they can refer back to as, as a good practice. Section six discusses a capital improvement program, uh, and that includes two components, the capital improvement plan, which is generally gonna be a five-year look at larger projects that are on the horizon so that as you are planning in the current year, you know what you need to be looking forward to in future years so that you can plan ahead. The capital budget is the first year of that five-year plan and the idea is that that capital budget would be adopted as a part of your annual budget. Again, this is for major capital improvements. Generally, we've laid out a, a guideline of twenty-five thousand dollars or more, a useful life of at least five years. But again, that's, uh, that's gonna be up to your discretion what should be included in this or not. Section seven covers debt. Uh, there are several pages in here about debt. In general, the, it provides guidelines of when debt might make sense, um, and what considerations you need to have as you're looking to issue debt, which is important. Like Candy mentioned, we're looking ahead to doing this DSS borrowing here in the near future. We did look at three ratios as a part of this portion of the policy. That includes tax-called debt as a percentage of your total assessed value. So that's how much debt you have outstanding compared to your tax base as a whole, since that's your largest source of revenue. The second one is your debt service as a percentage of total operating expenditures. So that would be how much principal and interest you're paying on an annual basis as a percentage of your total budget. And the third one being your tax-called debt service and fixed costs as a percentage of your operating expenditures. So that includes the principal and interest I mentioned with number two, but it also brings in, uh, pensions and other post-employment benefits that you all have future liabilities for, um, that are being funded on an annual basis as well. So next several pages, we look at the debt that you have outstanding. You have about eight point three million dollars of, uh, principal outstanding and that's in long-term debt. That's loans that you've already entered into that have a, a maturity of several years in the future. You also have a few lines of credit outstanding in the amount of six point eight million. Those lines of credit, one is for the purchase of land, two, one was for the school project and one was for the DSS building. As, as those projects evolve, um, and we go and do the permanent financing, we will pay off those lines of credit with the permanent financing. So those amounts generally in the second line, six point eight million, will move into the top line once we do that. You can see you've got a little bit over two million of debt service in the next four years or so and then it drops down a bit. We know that we've been working on this debt capacity and debt affordability analysis for, uh, over a year now. And that includes several projects that you all are looking at and that will be layered on top of this. So this is the first ratio that we talked about, debt as a percentage of your assessed value. We're recommending a level of three and a half percent. Right now, that dark green is your existing debt. You are below half a percent at the moment. When you take into account the about thirty-five million of debt that we have talked about in the debt capacity and affordability analysis, um, that includes the school project, DSS and the purchase of that land. That takes you up to about one and a half percent and you can see that declines over time as you pay off the debt and as your assessed value grows, which we're assuming it grows at a level of one percent. So three and a half percent is what we're recommending here. Uh, if you look at your debt in comparison to, um, your peers, that three and a half percent is over and above where, where all those folks are at the moment, but three and a half percent is still considered to be a very strong ratio here. There, even though your peers that we're showing here are below that three and a half percent level, there are plenty of localities around Virginia that are in excess of that three and a half percent. This is a little bit cyclical. Some folks that like Norway are basically at zero in this chart. However, you, they are borrowing in the very near future for large projects, so they're going to move down to the bottom of this table once, once that happens. So not everyone's on the same timeline when it comes to replacing schools or building new buildings, so that you could fall anywhere along here. Again, that one and, that existing plus proposed that we talked about is one and a half percent. You're still very much in line with, with the others, um, when you add on top the thirty-five million, that's being contemplated. Debt service as a percentage of expenditures, again, we're looking at, uh, how much principal and interest you're paying as a percentage of your total budget. We're recommending. We're recommending a range of ten to twelve percent, which is really considered a strong policy. There are others in the state that have levels of fourteen, fifteen, sixteen percent. They may not be at those levels, but their policies would be higher than yours. Again, we're looking at existing debt layering on top of your long-term, or your proposed debt from that thirty-five million. At existing levels, you're just below four percent. Once we layer that other debt on top, you only reach about six percent. So still well below that. You do have the capacity to issue some more debt, which we've laid out in the bottom there. Again, looking at a comparison, even after the projected debt at six percent, you are basically right on top of the medians for those peers that we're looking at. You can see that some of those folks do end up getting into that proposed policy range. Again, it's based on the debt service you've got and your, how big your budget is, and there are a lot of different factors that go into those two numbers. So you all are still looking pretty good here, even with the projected debt at layer on top. This third ratio that we've looked at incorporates fixed costs. Those fixed costs are shown in green there. We are recommending not to exceed of seventeen percent. Even when we layer on top the new debt that is being contemplated, you're still just over ten percent. So well below that policy level, but this will give you a good barometer if, as you continue into the future, as your budget changes and as your priorities change, how are your expenditures looking in comparison to your budget? Right now, you can see that you're well below that policy that we're recommending. Section eight covers financial reporting. There's not a whole lot to cover in this meeting, but it does lay out that the county will follow the normal accounting standards, and you'll annually prepare your audited financial statements, pretty much something that you're going to do anyway, but it's good to have it written somewhere as a policy. And section nine is economic development. Again, not a long section in the document, but it does cover if there is a large economic development project, that you all will look into it closely from a financial perspective if it does come up. So, next steps. You all are welcome to continue to review the document. If you have any comments or questions, you can pass them along to Candy, and we can discuss them with her, or if you feel comfortable with the document as it stands. It is something, I think, that can be adopted today if you'd like to do so. But first, I'll open it up to any questions that you have for me.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes?
Anybody have questions for Ben?
I think it's interesting, just looking at the story of your debt and as debt retires, because I've never really got, really got to see any of my own debts retire. But seeing that metric of how, if you set, even with the whatever projected long-term debt there might be, with the retirement of some, of the other millions and millions of dollars, how that, you have this little cycle. I do believe it is important that this county actually have in place a policy. I think it's good, I do that for myself and my own wife, where I set, what does Jesse's debt service coverage look like? And then the banks tell me their standard, and then I make sure I do that plus a little bit. So, and I really like how you're setting it at that level, and it's, I think it's powerful to know that we have that level of wiggle room. I definitely would look at you and say, I would like to have a more conservative metric, you know? I maybe three, just speaking up, maybe not three and a half, but maybe it's two or two and a half, and we can adjust it as we need to. I think that would probably be the only thing that I would look at, should say, whatever policy we produce, you know, might be a little bit more conservative to where we're at today. And then looking at other situations in the future, whatever major capital thing that might be, addressing that our policy says X, are we willing to leave the policy that we have set in place?
Yeah, no, I certainly understand that. Again, the, the levels that we've included here are just generally accepted as, as strong policies.
Yeah.
It's, it's different for different localities. These really paint the picture of your capacity to issue debt, like we've talked about many times. The difference between capacity and affordability can be very big.
Very different.
So, I mean, we are looking at thirty-five million of additional debt in that analysis that we're doing, and that is something that you can afford, but this would allow an additional sixty-four million on top of that if, so that's what I'm saying, like you.
Yeah.
That is very much out of your discretion, what level you would like to put this at.
I always err on the side of much more conservative, like knowing that we have that ability is one thing. Having a policy in place that makes us visit that policy and ask, are we willing to leave the policy to do X is a different thing. Am I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just talking out loud. What percentage of localities do you believe have a financial policy in place? Most?
Um, half? I, I can't speak for.
I mean, just anecdotally.
But in the Commonwealth, I would say maybe about half, a little more than half.
Yeah.
Generally, the ones that are rated issue debt regularly.
Have a financial.
Have a financial policy that they follow, and they follow it closely.
That's, I think that's important.
Yeah.
I, I really think, speaking to the board on this at this moment, picking what those metrics might mean, you know, like, like I said, I was just looking at you, I see this, I'm like, okay, well, maybe our debt assessed value shouldn't be three and a half, maybe it should be two, you know? Are, are we put, you know, stuff of that nature? Because how many metrics do we essentially have to pick?
We have three included here.
Okay. So it's the debt assessed.
Debt to assessed value, which is the three and a half percent.
Yeah.
Debt service to expenditures, which we have between ten and twelve percent. And then debt fixed costs to expenditures, which we have at seventeen percent. Now, I would say the three and a half percent, I, I think coming down on that is something that's certain to people, and there are plenty of other places in Virginia that are lower than that three and a half percent. But I would say this ten to twelve percent, I mean, maybe you leave it at ten instead of ten to twelve, but I wouldn't recommend going lower than ten because that's just.
Unfeasible.
I mean, it's generally, ten is considered a very strong policy.
Gotcha, okay.
And you're, again, it comes back to affordability.
Right.
You're not going to commit ten percent of your budget to debt service at the moment, so I don't think it's a concern at the moment.
Okay. I'm, yeah, sorry.
All right, tell me how this plays out.
Yeah.
Say we adopt this, we decide to come up with a grand plan to spend money. Essentially, we're going to our own people and our own document to get permission. So who are these people? What sort of added politics is that going to be? Are we going to our treasurer? Are we going to a board member that's looking it over and giving the thumbs up?
No. So the policies are something that you all will adopt. They are not legally binding. Really, you don't have to follow them. However, there is the perception that you will follow them if you have a policy in place. So you're really holding yourselves accountable, that you're not putting it in someone else's hands. You're the one adopting this, you're the one that's going to be holding yourself accountable for it. And again, just whenever we do plan to issue debt in the future, it is something that will be revisited.
It's going to be pretty dark. Why spend time on a document if there's no person that's going to stand up and be the backbone of the document?
You can be that person.
As long as I'm here.
Right. So again, it's a document that's put in place that you can point to that says, this is what we adhere to, this is what our policies are, and it really is viewed as something very positive in the financial world that you have policies in place, even if, from your perspective, there's not a lot of teeth behind them.
In our last meeting, there was a discussion about having a board member, our treasurer, and county administrator meeting and going over this, and, you know, apply, what I felt was applying our thoughts and things to these metrics, and it doesn't sound like that is what's.
The, our takeaway from the last meeting was that was the investment policies that we were going to review with the treasurer. Being that there was the election and everything, that has not happened yet, but the investment policies are very much something that we would like to break back to you. That's a separate document than this. This would be the financial policies that cover basically everything except investments. And again, you don't have, you don't, I'm not asking you to adopt these today. If they are something you'd like to revisit, or if there's metrics you'd like to see, or you'd like to know what the capacity is at a different level, that is something that we're happy to provide, and we can come back with a different document if you have changes that you'd like to make to it.
Are there other localities that have a similar income? We don't have a diverse income. We are property tax and TOT, essentially. I would be interested to know if, if spending declines, should we be more conservative? What are these other counties that have similar incomes? How safe are they playing it? Because we can't guarantee that the economy's going to keep pulling.
Yeah, the incomes of the county are not what we've focused on in this, but, but that's something we can definitely look into for you, is what other localities that have these policies, what those levels are. Again, the levels that we have in here are generally what we see, but we can, we can pull specific examples for you. And again, the, the point of this, like the debt to assessed value, the reason that we look at this and rating agencies look at this and VRA looks at this is, like you said, you're very heavily reliant on real estate taxes. So it's important to, to understand in perspective of your largest revenue source, what is the sort of debt that you're issuing.
Would the board be interested in having future work sessions on these policies to discuss various things and have that, bring back some other examples and recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's a good idea.
I definitely don't think we're in, in a position to approve anything right now.
No, no.
Of course.
No. But I've been, I'm grateful for the input because we're starting, I'm grasping, grasping the whole story of what debt capacity is. We've always known we've been in a good posture, but seeing the metrics thrown on a piece of paper is also important. You know, I, I generally, like I said, I do think some level of a plan is critical because I, I don't, there are times where you have to operate above and beyond whatever your plan is, and as you've mentioned, having an additional fund as well is a neat perspective in showing how conservative we are as a government in utilizing those funds. But I think whatever your financial policy work session would probably be good, you know, in a couple hours, bring us some more data points.
Yeah.
Provide sooner.
Yep.
I think it's a good idea.
I'm interested in the economies that have our income streams, if that's possible.
Yeah.
I just think it's been, it's been very valuable as we've been covering debt service, you know, for the, for the last, well.
Three, four years.
Last six years, really, since we first, you know, met about, about, you know, cap, our capital needs. And both your recommendation of where we should be and where we actually are clearly are the two most important, you know, things that we need to track, and now we've tracked it for a long time. Every time we revisit this, it reinforces those things that we're looking towards the future, that the needs of the county are going to be. The needs of the county from a real standpoint may actually take precedent over whatever our policy is, but having the policy in place, I think also is a really good thing because, you know, it's, it sets a goal of what we'd like to do and what we'd like to achieve, and if we, and, and we know what the benefits and the costs are of being on either side of that goal. So, anyway, thanks for all your work.
Of course.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
And yeah, I think we'll revisit as a, as a board.
Okay. Yeah, we can get a work session scheduled here going into, you know, budget season, and maybe we can combine it with a CIP work session or something like that.
Okay.
So that's, you know, maximizes the benefit.
Yeah, I might, I might also add that some other localities adopt the policies on an annual basis as a part of the budget, so that it's reviewed every year and you're constantly reminded of it. So that could be.
Right.
Right, they're definitely living documents that you all can adjust as you desire throughout time.
Very good. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next, we're going to move on to new and unfinished business. We have first up the FFA funding request for National Western Stock Show in Denver. We could have representatives and Ms. McGary, would you like to address this and introduce our guest?
As Chair Cora mentioned, we have representatives from the Nelson County High School FFA team here to talk to you about their funding request for the National Western Stock Show, where they'll compete in the National Western Stock Show Livestock Judging Contest between January eighth and the thirteenth of twenty twenty-five. Take it away.
Hi, I'm Ayla Hatter.
I'm Jeri Saunders.
I'm Campbell Beltschmidt.
I'm Laney Harvey, and we're in the Nelson Senior FFA Livestock Judging Team.
Today, we're going to be talking about the National Western Stock Show in Denver, Colorado, and this is the first time in Nelson FFA history we've gotten the opportunity to compete at this contest.
In order to compete at the National Western Stock Show in Denver, Colorado, we practiced all spring and summer to compete at the Virginia State Convention. At the convention, we placed third as a team, allowing us to compete in Denver. In twenty twenty-three, we placed fifth at the State Convention, earned an opportunity to go to Massachusetts in September twenty twenty-three and compete in the Big E, where we placed third.
In preparation, as a team, we've spent countless hours together and individually, diligently studying in order to each be readily knowledgeable in evaluating livestock. Eli, Campbell, and myself have been judging livestock together since the sixth grade, now being juniors. Although Laney has gotten a later start, we can tell that she has developed the drive and passion that has grown in each of us.
The National Western Stock Show is an annual livestock show called every January at the National Western Complex in Denver, Colorado. This show has been held since nineteen oh six, and this show influences the future generations and promotes youth and community development through livestock. We deeply appreciate this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for getting to compete at the National Western Stock Show. We will be doing twelve classes along six sets of reasons. Before our contest, we will be attending Colorado State University, where we will be doing a workout that consists of evaluating livestock and forming sets of reasons on how we place the class. We will spend days in the stockyard, watching shows, and walking around looking at some of the top animals out west.
We have done numerous fundraisers every year to help fund our trip. We all took the time to sit down and create a letter together as a team to reach out to family members and businesses to seek funding for our trip. The alumni chapter kindly helped raise money by hosting a fundraiser. In two thousand and twenty-three, we all graciously donated four thousand dollars towards our out-of-state trips to Massachusetts and Indiana. We are still seeking about four thousand dollars to make this trip possible for us. Therefore, with that being said, we deeply appreciate anything you all are willing to provide for us. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all. Well done, and congratulations on your success to this point. It's pretty incredible to see you all go into this competition for the first time in Nelson history, so. Any questions or comments from the board? I believe the most recent update is they are currently five thousand dollars short of their goal, their fundraising goal at this point. And from what I'm seeing, I believe they just said last year we gave them four thousand dollars. This year, they have increased their rankings and are going to an even bigger and better competition, so I, for one, would certainly consider helping them bridge the gap with their five thousand dollar shortfall at this point, but I will turn it over to other board members for comment.
I'm just going to say, I attribute the FFA to the start of any success that I've had in public speaking, in reading animals, assessing them, and communicating that. That is my job, right? So I'm really proud of you guys, and I agree, we should give them that money. You're going to make connections of a lifetime there, so I hope you have fun.
So you said they're five thousand short? Let's just give them the five thousand.
Any comments, Mr. Reed?
No, you know, we, we've been giving them four thousand for the past couple of rounds, and we all know that it ain't what it used to be in terms of getting people where they need to go.
This is true.
And we'd, we'd love to see you represent the county in Denver.
Yeah, very good. I will entertain a motion that we provide five thousand dollars to the Nelson County FFA Livestock Judging Team on their. on their quest to the National Western Stock Show in Denver.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allocate $5,000 towards their trip.
On second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Go in.
Yeah, absolutely. Now get back to school. But you know, I was asked in the beginning if I wanted to move you all earlier on the agenda, and I said, no. I wanted, I wanted you to, to have to sit through a board meeting for a little while just to see. So I hope you picked up a few, a few tips and don't run for public office. Thank you all. And thank you, Mr. Ramsey and Ms. Seaman, for everything you do for this team. Their success is, is largely in part to the work you all do. So thank you all as well.
Do y'all remember that time Ed McCann was here? You weren't here. Ernie remembers. And I made a motion and Ed McCann knew.
Corrected your motion?
No, no. He stood at the back over there and went back and forth for about 10 times and waited till the meeting was over to critique my motion. And I looked at him, I said, well, I didn't sit in your class. And he says, well, you'd have done me a bunch of favors.
I'll have to agree with what Dr. Ligon said. It, it's amazing what they teach, the next generation in public speaking and parliamentary procedure and all of the, the contests they prepare for. If you haven't sat through any of that, you have no idea the hard work these kids put in and the preparation they go through. And so it, it carries on. I, I think back to my time with Ed McCann, whenever I'm making a motion and I'm just like, please, don't, don't say I make a motion, because never say I make a motion.
I'm making.
Anyway, all right. Next, we are going to move on to proposed work order amendment for zoning text for short-term rentals. Dylan?
That was great. I think we all need a little eulogy.
Yes.
All right, so at their meeting on October 23rd, the Planning Commission directed staff to contact the Berkeley Group to draft a proposed work order amendment for zoning and subdivision ordinance updates. The purpose would be to address short-term rental regulations first and concurrently while we work through the full update process. Berkeley Group provided a scope of work which is attached with this memo. It provides, that Berkeley Group would provide a memo highlighting best practice summaries and benchmark research findings from two localities, as well as draft a text for the amendment with one round of revisions. County staff would facilitate any extra work sessions in the public hearings for that. The Planning Commission reviewed the work order amendment at the meeting on November 20th last month. And staff was asked to communicate with the Berkeley Group regarding the selection criteria for these benchmark localities, and also asked for a revision to provide for at least 10 benchmark localities, as well as ensuring legal and actionable strategies are generated as a result. I did get a response back from the Berkeley Group today, which I'll share. Because the question that came up was if and how the proposed cost would be affected with increasing the number of benchmark localities. So essentially, their team reached back out and said, it's kind of a lot to unpack. But for 10 benchmark localities, increasing it to 10 instead of two would increase the price for that line item from $500 to $3,000. In addition, the schedule would need to be extended by a few weeks. And this is a quote, frankly speaking, that type of increase in benchmark localities isn't necessary and would not provide the benefit that matches the increased cost in time. In their past short-term rental research, they found that most locality short-term rental standards are fairly similar. Differences are most noticeable between localities with tourist economies and those without. So their recommendation is that a memo with best practices and two to four benchmark localities should be enough to provide information to make these decisions. As far as how the benchmark localities are selected, it's a cooperative effort between Berkeley Group and county staff. They want to hear, you know, which localities Nelson feels are most similar to what we would like to emulate, those we don't want to emulate. If they're aware of any outliers related to locality standards, such as not having them or currently trying to edit, then they would let us know and suggest some other replacements. And as far as legal actionable standards, of course, they're not legal professionals. County attorney would review any text amendments. If we did need assistance for that, we can have a subconsultant, but it shouldn't be a problem to use our own staff for that. So today, this is for your consideration, discussion, questions. Originally, I think my recommendation was going to be to review it again at our work session next week on the 18th, when we have our joint meeting with the Berkeley Group and Planning Commission. Based on your input today, if you want any amendments to that, and then potentially vote on it at the work session next week, or you can vote on it.
So one, one question I have is clearly, other localities with tourist economies, perhaps most like, like Nelson, are in other states. And if they're in other states, what are those opportunities that they have in other states that we don't have that might take, you know, someone in Richmond to change, you know, the, the landscape of what we can and can't do?
Right.
Because sometimes, you know, what, you know, what happens in California or Vermont or North Carolina or Tennessee might or might not correspond with those things we can do here.
Right.
Now that's a whole, I don't know if that's incorporated in here because it certainly is not going to be a good exercise to come up with a list of things we'd like to do if we can't do them. And I know the Berkeley Group would be able to siphon through those. But then it also maybe makes some of those comparisons not as useful. If you know what I mean? I don't know if you have any input on that. It's just a question.
It's a great question, and I can, you know, correspond with them some more to see, you know, when they talk about in our past short-term rental research, where are they researching? Is it only Virginia? Where else are they looking? I know they're all very familiar with state code and what they've done in other localities. So I can imagine that unless it was something outlandish, that it would be off the table. But then we would have to ensure that it met state code as well. So if there's any, you know, things like that, regulations we want to look into, we will make sure that they're compliant with state.
Yeah. And, and I think the recommendation of doing four is probably, probably good without, you know, going overboard in any direction.
So I can reach out to them about that, get some more information, ask for a revised work order with up to four localities. Any other input?
I realize it, it's hard for some people to make a decision without feeling like things have been adequately investigated. And I think that's where this is coming from in a sense, because this is a hot topic. I, I'm more hopeful in relying on someone with an open mind to tell me the implications of each decision than actually truly knowing what everyone's doing. And if you feel like we're getting that from the Berkeley Group, then I don't think we need tons of information, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, I think we're, that we're limited in some fashions about what we're already, by state statute, on what localities are doing, at least in Virginia. I mean, I think we could find some, I mean, you know. And, and obviously, we're addressing the short-term rental aspect and the zoning text actively with the zoning as we're ongoing. I guess this is just to expedite this portion?
Yes, so my understanding when we took this to the Planning Commission was that one of the board's initiatives that came out of your September work session was addressing short things, short-term rentals early on in this update process. So as you know, we're redoing the full ordinance, and that's going to look completely different. This text amendment would fit into our current ordinance, the layout. So it's a matter of if.
So we'll be doing it twice? Once a year and then once in zoning?
So this will be a zoning text amendment.
For today's?
This, we'll start that process. They'll provide the memo, best practices, give us the text. You do revisions, they send them back. Then we adopt, we do public hearings, the Planning Commission, and board to adopt it into the ordinance. And then as we move through the full update process, we get to that section and then just reformat it into the new ordinance.
One of the recommendations that I made at the Planning Commission, which nobody really had any comment on, was that if we agreed on what our goals and objectives were for, for our ordinance, that it would be a lot easier to determine whether these comparatives are going to be useful or not. Because if, if it's true that we want to, you know, preserve and increase our single-family housing stock, for instance, that's a strategy that you can look and see how other localities that had that as an objective, what kind of steps did they take in order to do that? And, you know, there's other things that we want to, that we perhaps would like to prioritize too. But that, I think, would make, would simplify things in a way that we might get more bang for our buck in terms of what we get back from them and how these rules can be.
Right. And of course, you know, with short-term rental regulation as it relates to housing, that's, there's all kinds of pieces of that puzzle there.
Well, I say we talk about it on the 18th again.
Yeah, I think so.
Just wanted to get that in front of you so we had it on the line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have authorization for public hearing on local authority to reduce 25 mile an hour speed limits.
Just as a refresher, I'm sure you all remember at our November meeting, we reviewed the new state code authority for locality to reduce local speed limits. And the board directed that we bring back the draft ordinance for the board to consider authorizing a public hearing and add it to our local county code. And if you, just as another refresher, the state code section is 46.2 dash 1300 A4. And this allows the governing body of any county, city, or town by ordinance, may, made by ordinance or by ordinance authorized its chief administrative officer to reduce the speed limit to either 15 miles per hour or 20 miles per hour on any highway within its boundaries that is located within, within a business district or a residence district, where the posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour. And then we further define what a business district is and resident district as defined in 15.22200. So you have before you a resolution that would authorize public hearing on the draft ordinance that allows me as the county administrator, following a public hearing, to reduce these local speed limits. I think that was the way the board wished to proceed.
Yeah, we talked about this last month.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. Go for it.
I move that we approve resolution R 2024 dash 82. Do I need to read the rest of that?
I don't think so. Second. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And just to clarify, the purpose of this resolution is not enacting any speed limit changes. It is just authorizing public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah.
And which would allow the county code to be amended to provide this local authority.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Okay, we'll schedule a public hearing for January 14th at 7:00 P M.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have authorization for a public hearing on proposed Wintergreen Master Plan Amendment, Conservation easement, and then we're taking a break. Just for reference.
Mr. Reed? Planning and zoning department, we received a request from Taylor Cole with Conservation Partners in Lexington on November 1st. This request is to amend Wintergreen's master plan to allow for a conservation easement on a portion of property in Wintergreen. The properties are currently designated for residential and mixed-use development, known as Grassy Ridge 1 and 2. Virginia code requires that you, the governing body, advertise for adoption of any plan, ordinance, or amendment thereof. If this is an amendment to an approved plan, we have to schedule hearings. The W P O A Executive Director Jay Roberts indicated that they would not approve all of Grassy Ridge being conservation easement. So they're requiring a portion of about approximately 40 acres be held for future development. And the acreage for the proposed conservation easement is about 355 acres. So this, a public hearing for this request is scheduled for December 18th, next Wednesday at 5 o'clock before our work session in the old boardroom. So since there was an expedited schedule that we were able to accommodate, we wanted to get this in front of you so that you know what it is when you see it next week.
So does the 355 acres include the 40-acre reduction?
No.
Does not. So what would be, so we would be doing the public hearing on the full 355 acres, that's the proposal?
Correct.
And then what, if that should, you know, subsequent to the public hearing, if that should come back, what is the legal authority of W P O A to accept or reject that conservation easement? Should we approve it? I'm just curious.
So W P O A has indicated their support of it. I'm not sure what legal obligations that they have on their end. Basically, the Conservation Partners, in order to accept it, they need the locality and W P O A to issue a letter of approval, you know, saying it's consistent with their comprehensive plan. I'm not exactly sure what legally W P O A has to do.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it make more sense to do a public hearing on whatever they've agreed it should be instead of one that W P O A is not going to?
This is the one.
Oh, this is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So W P O A is on board. The public hearing is just for that 355 acres without the 40.
Oh, so it does include that. It does include the redu, 40-acre reduction. Okay, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
Everybody's on board.
Great, great. I, I, I didn't want a battle ensuing, you know, as soon as we approve something that
Right.
W P O A wasn't, wasn't pleased with.
No, they're, they're perfectly happy with that.
Good, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution R 2024 dash 83.
Mr. Sherman, I move that we approve resolution R 2024 dash 83. Nelson County Board of Supervisors authorization for a public hearing on a proposed when-agreed master plan amendment for a conservation easement.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Amanda, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Redford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Very good.
Five minutes.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll come back to reports, appointments, directors.